Let's come to order. It is six thirty and this is the Enfield Planning Board, November sixth, twenty twenty four. We are in the Enfield Public Works Conference Room and also virtually on the Teams platform. And do we have guests?
David Boffe.
Okay, David Boffe is a guest so far.
When the dessert spot then.
Yep, okay. Well, Japan, I gotta finish the opening spiel here. So members present from my left, starting with.
Lynda Jones.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Flaherty.
Phil Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Eric Harhards.
Altlers.
Bill Griffith.
Alternate staff.
Rob Taylor.
And where's Whitney tonight?
Whitney's not gonna be able to join us. She's at a football banquet. She'll do the minutes from the recording, so.
Okay, that's great. Eric told me yesterday that he has another thing going and would not be here. Since he is the Select Board Ex officio, he is not replaceable. So we shall continue.
Except by.
Except by another select board member. And apparently we have no other Select Board member.
They were pretty busy.
They were.
Yes, they were.
We have no hearings, no conceptuals, and because Eric is not here, we have no Select Board report.
Good. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Land use administrator report, Rob.
Yes. Uh, let's see. Tomorrow night is Conservation Commission. They will be taking up again the special exception that you guys talked about in your last meeting as part of the. Just get everybody here. On the Laramie Farms, the special exception for Wetlands Crossings. The Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and the Health Officer were all given twenty days for comment and you guys decided not to.
Yeah.
Do anything last meeting. Conservation Commission met last month and had a conversation, but didn't feel like they were ready to make any move at that time, so they continued till tomorrow night. In the interim, they did, a number of them, I think it was three members, so it wasn't a quorum, which we kind of lucked out on. But we did post it as a meeting because we were worried that it was gonna be a quorum and they did keep some minutes. They went on a site visit down to Massachusetts, Avril, Mass, to visit a development by the same developer down there to get a look at some of the drainage structures that were sort of relevant to this conversation. And so I will be at that meeting tomorrow night. They did take a bunch of pictures that we're gonna use tomorrow as sort of a kind of example of what kind of stuff they're talking about. And try to help keep them in their lane too, because there's been some talk amongst members like, oh, I don't know if this is an appropriate development. That's not their, that's not their purview. Their purview is specific to the Wetlands Crossing. And, you know, it's issues like, do they favor traditional culvert or open box culvert? You know, those are the kind of things that would be in their purview on this specific occasion. So that's tomorrow night. And then, as we talked about, I think the last meeting, the Superior Court Appeal will be heard next Wednesday. And go down for that, it's the thirteenth, I think is the date, ten, ten AM. So I can report back to you at your next meeting.
Was earlier than ten.
Is it? Thought I'd written it down as the thirteenth at ten, but we'll make sure we get the right time before we go down.
Maybe your lawyer wants to meet with you early before the hearing.
I, I can't recall.
Well, I'll have more to report after next week. I'm sure there will be no decision rendered at that time. It'll be taken under advisement, but they'll hear from attorneys for both sides of the case and have some oral arguments essentially at that time. Been getting a fair amount of lakefront calls. There's a few pieces of property. Same old issues that we're dealing with is the setbacks to the water, fifty foot setback. It makes a lot of those properties on Masco Lake in particular, but Crystal as well, tough to work with because fifty feet, most of those houses are within the fifty foot buffer zone. And so.
Jeremy, would you sign in?
Trying to, did I even bring that? Okay, sure, hold on. Sorry. So I've got at least two of those going. A couple of, I've started with shorelands permits. And we get sort of courtesy copies of those shorelands permits. And so that kind of triggers me to be like, hey. And it's, it's interesting because it's usually new people that have bought recently in town and they sort of quickly understand the state regs. But they don't understand that it's a sort of parallel and overlapping regs on the town level that, that obviously we have to enforce. And so I'm dealing with some of those kind of issues.
State's harder.
Yep.
State's much harder.
Although it's interesting, there is, a state has some like little carve outs for decks. We don't. So I have one gentleman that's very upset that he wants to expand his deck. The state will let him do it. But for us, he's gonna need a variance. And I've sort of on the advice of the zoning board, because they've been real strict with especially the water quality issues coming up lately. They're really reluctant to, to give variances for, for decks especially. I mean, if you got your house, you can enjoy your place, just maybe not as much with, without the deck, so. So those are a couple of issues that are kind of simmering as we speak. It's a big piece of property for sale up off of Route four A and Enfield Center. Well over a hundred acres. Getting a lot of interest in that. It's on the market. Class six road there.
Yeah.
Obviously that.
Goodyear Road.
What's that?
Goodyear.
Yes, yeah, yeah. You know that big parcel? You probably can see it on that map right there. It's that big rectangle right there.
Yeah.
Had had a fair amount of interest in it, but the class six issue is definitely, scare people. As it's, it's not, it's not a done deal. You know, you'd have to come in to talk to you guys. You'd have to talk to the Select Board. It's kind of a, you know, massaging the issue. And so people are kind of spooked, I think, a little bit by that. Looks like we may see something again. You guys, I think, did a site plan maybe five, six years ago out on Old Route ten, off of exit fifteen.
Yeah.
I believe at the time it was a guy named Mason, Mason Racing.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, one is likely to come back again. I've got a surveyor and I'm talking to, I actually talked to a really cool young surveyor from Clermont. And I was like, wow, am I happy to find you? He, he's taken over the business from his dad and so he's gonna be added to our list or stable of available surveyors. Looks like the brewery thing may have, may have some life yet. You guys probably saw that in the paper and maybe we talked about it the last meeting. It sounds like there's some people in town that are kind of getting together that may be able to buy the property. We're working on that behind the scenes. There's some people higher up than me that are facilitating and it may have some, some life yet. We'll see. Kind of fingers crossed on that. Would be nice to see that one come back. Lori from Enfield House of Pizza. As you guys know, we did a whole bunch of site work there as a result of our project across the street. And so Enfield House of Pizza has basically new land there that was created with all that fill that we brought across.
Yeah, that reminded me, I wanted to ask you about that. When she, when they did that, the original House of Pizza, they must have mapped out where the wetlands are along the rail, between our property and the rail trail.
Be concerned to check into that.
Yeah, yeah, because I was, when I was down there a few weeks ago along the rail trail, so like, I know there's wetlands in here, but I have no clue where the line is.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
So she's looking to develop that?
Yeah, she's got a, at least a, I've seen some sketches of some possible. It would be commercial tenant on the first floor and I think she's seen the light in terms of residential being possible upstairs by right and obviously residential being a slam dunk these days around here. So she's at least contemplating, you know, mixed use in that additional space that she's got. Think it would be a great spot. I mean, there's obviously great access to the rail trail and there's services there, you know, from restaurants and coffee shop, Dunkin' Donuts right there, so. Be interesting to see. I don't know if you guys heard, but Randy Howe, who owns the car wash next door, has passed away.
Really?
Cancer.
He was young.
Yeah, he was young. He's younger than me. I think he was fifty-one. And had cancer and so it was really sad. So I don't know what'll become of that, whether his children or his heirs will keep going with it or sell it. We'll see. Jim Kelleher is real close with his apartment building on Main Street, the six units that you guys approved a couple of years ago. We did have a little snafu there last week. He was getting ready to tie into our water line and the excavator accidentally ripped our eight inch main.
Oh.
And as you can imagine, when you tie into an eight inch main, you can, you can dump some water fast.
Didn't they just fix that main around there a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Well, that's nineteen oh three section too.
It is, and it's right. There's a line that actually goes underneath the river and the rail bed up to like Wells and Stevens up that way. And that's, that's the line I hooked into.
Wow.
Yeah, and it, I think in like fifteen minutes it took them to shut the water off. They moved almost half of our water tower into the, into that hole. So it was like a, it was like a leak in that little area. But they did get, they did get it fixed and they did get them tied in. And as you guys have seen, he did do a little project right on the edge of the state right away with a retaining wall, which has gained a few on-street parking spots, which I thought was a positive for us. He's, he's agreed that they're not his spaces. They would be publicly available spaces. Obviously, tenants could use those spaces if they had guests over or whatever. But, so he did consult with me, but he did not consult with state and the state kind of read him the riot act later on. But I did communicate with people at the state and I think it's kind of, kind of smoothed out and I think that he will. It's, I don't think he's gonna pave it. I think it's just gonna be hauled back on the side of the state right away so that that's, those spots will be available. As you guys know, parking's at a premium in that part of town, so the extra eighty-three parallel spots, I didn't think was gonna be.
But that wouldn't be available during the winter season.
At night, right. He's, he's acknowledged that to me, parking bans and so forth.
For the tenants.
Get that message?
Yes. Let's see, what else?
Before you go on, there, there's an awful lot of mailboxes that they've put up there for six apartments.
Those are for existing. Those are, yeah, he relocated the mail, mailboxes for the tenants across the street.
Wow.
He did a nice job.
Not the same thing.
Upgraded. It looks great. I was just kind of flabbergasted.
I was just talking to Kirk tonight. I can't understand why people on Main Street have rural delivery. If anybody should be using the post office, I would think it would be them, but that's the legacy that we've got, that people right on Main Street have rural delivery. Go figure. And we were talking about if you, Enfield Center, there's a post office right down the street, but there's people.
If you work.
The post office isn't open. True, very true. Yeah, yeah. But in my town, if you live within a certain number of miles of the post office, you get a BO box. You don't have the option of rural delivery. So kind of an interesting thing. Jay Boucher, who you guys also approved, site planned for four apartments in the Tardif Hall, which is behind Shaker Museum.
Yeah.
Those, those units I've communicated with are nearing completion. He's in communication with Darmouth Hitchcock and most likely gonna be staff that's gonna rent from them. They're supposedly beautiful apartments. He's invited me down. I'm gonna try to go down and see what they look like, just because I was in there before and let's see the after. And obviously we had a few bumps in the road there with inspection and some of the things that we made him do that didn't make him super happy, but he's gotten through it and I think he'll be able to rent those for top dollar. They're gonna be really nice apartments. Obviously a great location. He's having a little, maybe you guys might have some recollection of the original approvals for that whole place. Maybe it's before most of our times. The, the rights of way for the beach. Supposedly everybody, oh, it doesn't, doesn't confront us. Yeah, nobody's, he's especially talking to me. He wants to see like approvals that, you know, whether it was in the minutes as to who had what rights. It was his contention that everybody in Shaker Development had access to the public beach. But now there's people claiming that if you're in Shaker Landing, you only have, they were, there was specific, specific units that had the right of ways. Because that had come up before, not about Tardif Hall, but about.
Yeah, just that whole area.
That whole area.
And when the sailing club was down at that beach,
Right.
that, I mean, no one thought that would end until someone bought the last four lots
Right.
and they bought the land.
The land.
So it became private land.
Right. I had a couple of interesting meetings recently. The last week it was TAC, which stands for Transportation Advisory Committee, which I'm a member of from the town. And that is part of the regional planning commission's official duties with regard to the governor's tenure plan. Transportation projects that get added to that tenure plan, essentially sort of long range planning projects for the DOT. Those get added with consult of the TAC. And so we had a meeting last week and we discussed three projects in the Upper Valley. And we scored those three. And one of those projects was our project for a possible, let me get the right word, roundabout at Main Street and Maple on Route four. State of Hampshire DOT has done some engineering to show that as a possibility. It's really, it starts with them. It doesn't start with us, but obviously that's a very high volume intersection, as you guys all know. And they've.
That'll slow traffic down.
It'll slow traffic down, but if you're trying to get out onto four, it'll make it so you can do it.
Yeah.
If you're coming from Maple or Main, right now, there's certain times of day where you can't, you can't get.
Well, the angles are wrong.
Exactly.
The angle coming out of Main Street is wrong.
Is terrible.
That's the big problem. It's a psychological thing.
Right.
It's more than a psychological.
It's an actual.
It's an actual thing.
It's an actual thing.
When I turn my head to look.
Exactly.
To look to the west, I'm looking at my A pillar.
Yes. Oh, yes, yeah.
And my wife walks down there. She tried to cross Maple Street right there at that intersection, almost got run over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so pedestrian improvements would be part of that.
Yeah.
And there was a big accident there last week.
Oh, yeah. So it scored very high. It was the highest of the three projects that we looked at. There was one down in Charlestown at Lover's Lane on Route twelve, one in Clermont on Main Street and, and our project. And ours was the highest score by far because of the traffic volume, safety improvements for pedestrians. It would entail a lot of real complicated stuff because our biggest problem is Hughes Park was built with federal money. And so there's some encumbrances on Hughes Park for recreational access. We took federal money to build recreational assets. So what that means is if we do any taking of land in Hughes Park, we have to replace it somewhere. And so specifically the basketball court at Hughes Park is sort of on the chopping block because they would literally set Main Street over to go through about where that basketball court is to bring it out onto the circle at a, at a proper angle. But if you guys have traveled around, you'll see that the state is really committed now to these and I think even municipalities. Anywhere that I've seen it, you know, you're, I remember when they first started coming out, you're like, what the hell are they doing here? And if you drive them regularly, you'll see that they're way better than, it's better than a stoplight. Yeah, for sure. And it's better than Dysfunction Junction, which is what it is now. City Lebanon's got two or three that they've proposed. Few of them are on State Road, but they're in the urban compact area for them, so there's, there's matching funds. They have to come up with sort of ante up. It's not a hundred percent funded by the state if it's, if it's in the urban compact. I think the town has come up with like twenty percent. We do not have urban compact, at least not yet. But it certainly would have implications for sewer, water, all that kind of stuff, so. I do have a drawing if anybody would like to see that at some time. It's just a sketch that the engineers have, have given us. I think it's a ninety-foot diameter circle, which would be a little challenging for big rigs. Because a big rig can be ninety feet long, almost at least. And so if you've seen those, they, they literally design them so that the trailer can kind of go up on the curb and come back down.
The Hanover ones that are so.
Hanovers are like that. The one on, the one at Vosquin coming off of ninety-three is like that.
Yep, yep. So.
Hedge on it.
That one is, I mean, getting added to the tenure plan, which it still has not. It's scored high and it's got the recommendation of TAC. Still has to go through a lot of rigamarole to even be elevated. And if it does get added to the tenure plan, it's probably fifteen to twenty years before it really comes to life. Because we've been on the tenure plan with a whole bunch of work for Route four, from the Lebanon Line all the way into the village, ending at about Gusanos. Yeah. We did successfully lobby to have them add. There's a couple of retaining walls in the vicinity of Gusanos. They were built years and years ago. They were built out of galvanized steel and they're all rusted to hell. And when I first got here, they're like, well, what do you got for projects? And I said, we need to fix that retaining wall. And they said, oh, no, no, that's maintenance. We don't, we don't put maintenance stuff on tenure plan. And I'm like, well, okay, then maintain it. And eventually I kind of fought with them and they kind of came around and said, okay, we're adding it to our, so they've got about ten million dollars worth of work, again, starting at Lebanon Line to Gusanos. And they've got about six million dollars worth of funding available in the, in the thing, so. It's gonna be kind of prioritized. They, they've, you saw them, they were working on that little cross pipe for what's called Huntune Brook right there by Gusanos. Last week they were doing some welding on it. They freshly paved it, but the whole bridge is suspect underneath. They want to fix that. And then it's really about dry bridge hill. It's the improvements that they need to do there. The, that's a dangerous section of road, as you guys all know. There's no breakdown lane. There's no passing lane. And it's like.
Passenger bike space.
There are no pedestrians. And we're, you know, a couple of weeks from that first snowstorm,
Yeah.
when nobody has their snow tires on and they literally get on that hill and zoom, and they start sliding back down the hill. And then, then your Route four is closed.
Big traffic.
And then people are trying to go around four A. Of course, they can't come through if they're big rigs on Main Street because of the overpass. Are they gonna go down and come over Clug Road? You know, there's always different scenarios that it's, it's a nightmare. So they are, I've seen some engineering on that. They've got two possible plans. One is for an enlarged breakdown lane and one is for a passing lane, like you see coming from seventeen up into Enfield, come towards Enfield.
They must be looking at taking those rocks.
They've got a blast.
Got a blast.
Ledge.
The other side.
Stability issue.
You can't swear anything on.
That's why it's so expensive. It's a huge project. And then, of course, the, the environmental stuff. Just the, just the environmental stuff that they have to deal with is massive. You know, the old days of the state, just doing whatever the heck they want, they have to sort of follow some rules. And so just the wetlands and all that kind of impacts, they've got to, they've got to deal with that. So that's kind of cooking on that level.
Can I just ask what their timeframe is for that?
That one's coming up. That one's probably in the next couple of years. That one has been on the tenure plan now for probably twenty years, right? And so it's starting to rise to a point where they're actually gonna go ahead. Again, the big concern there is do they have enough money to do anything impactful there? Because the longer they wait, the more expensive it gets, you know? Twenty years ago, they could probably have done it with ten million dollars, but now they, they can't. And so that's cooking.
For the hill?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it, there's, it's, it's the lane stuff I was talking about, passing stabilization comes over and actually does some stuff in the vicinity of the Enfield Garage and further down. There's there's improvements that they need to do there. Like I said, the Huntune Brook and the retained walls. So there's, I mean, that's, that's big money. Those guys, everything they do is big money, as you probably are well aware.
And the state's gonna have less and less of them.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the big question. It's about it. Unless you guys have anything you have for me specific, I mean.
I had a conversation with the Nash's. They came out.
I brought them with you, yes.
Yeah, they, and they're, they're interested in doing some cluster development with their land and my land there. But they have some serious issues with our current regulation on restrictions on hundred-foot barriers around, around your cluster development and some of the wording is in our, in our zoning regulations. So I said, well, send me your recommended changes and we'll take a look at it. Because we're, we're in the process of revising to make housing more available in town. And if you have problems with certain parts of our zoning regulations, send me your, send me your ideas and then we'll, we'll talk about it, so.
And that land is where?
SD Lane. It's right off of Main Street in the vicinity of Surgeon Street, some, somewhere.
Yeah, and then it butts up against a piece of my property. They want a chunk of my land.
Across from the Frog Pond. Across from the Frog Pond.
So I got a meeting with Oaks next week with the Nash's and Oaks to talk about.
Yep. Yep.
But.
You guys also know that the Select Board had a meeting last, last time. Wasn't, it wasn't this week. It was two weeks ago, yes, but he mentioned it, I think, last time that they're negotiating with Oaks. I think that's pretty much a, a deal. There has been a little back and forth. I appreciated your response on the listserv. The some people are saying it doesn't look good and stuff, but certainly would be some housing for sure there. It, they've submitted at least initially a plan that sort of resembles our old mill that was there. What was called the Lower Baltic. I've got a postcard in my office that shows it and it's very good facsimile copy, but people are like, it looks like a prison. So you're never gonna make everybody happy near those kind of projects. There was some stuff on listserv about, you know, the price, but we only had one response and they're gonna pay us eighty thousand for that land. It is brownfields. We have done a lot of work to remediate brownfields.
Two acres, three acres?
I heard that was all remediated though.
Oh, yeah. We've done it. We've got Clean Bill of Health.
Yeah.
We just have a little bit of trouble with the state DOT who owns the rail trail.
Shocking.
And they've dumped all the rail ties all over the place on the side of the rail trail. And it's funny how when you go after them and say, hey, you gotta clean up your mess, oh, wait a second here. If it was us, they would be coming at us with guns blazing.
One sided.
We keep putting pressure on to try to get them to clean that up because it is a stumbling block on that piece of property. But the problem there is it's the issue that exists end to end on that rail trail. And I'm sure they're looking at it like, well, if we cleaned it up there, then we're gonna have to clean it up on everything else. But it was their great mistake when they tore up the tracks. But they just to take all the, the ties and set them to the side. And those are all treated with creosote and, you know, whatever, strychnine or formaldehyde, whatever it is.
So how did the, the number of forty-eight units come to be on a two acre piece?
I think we should not be talking about this at this point because it's gonna come before.
We'll see a site plan. But we did do new zone there. We did a spot zone on that.
Well, there's no, there's no unit limit on that.
There isn't. Right, that's right. That's correct. It's really like CB, whatever the land can support, if they can fit them in there, parking will be an issue.
Parks and I shared about that.
So that's about it.
Can you, can the board, the Select Board do a spot zone without talking to the Planning Board?
We've already done this.
It's improved two years ago.
They approved it.
The Shen Street Zone.
Yeah.
Two years ago.
In the reg.
Yeah, correct.
So moving right along.
Yes.
We didn't get the monthly permit report.
Oh, yeah, I owe that to you. I better send that out tomorrow. I'll send it to you. Yep.
Okay. Minutes.
Does anybody need copies?
October twenty-third.
I had one small change.
Go ahead, Brad.
Line one oh eight. Select Board met Monday, deliberate the recent public hearing for town septic rules. It should be lakeshore septic rules.
Yes.
That's the only change I had.
Anyone else have any changes or comments on the minutes? Hearing none.
Make a motion. We accept the minutes as amended.
Second. Second motion made by Dan, seconded by Brad, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstentions.
Stained.
Approved with Bill's abstention as amended by Brad. Uh, zoning work group reports. Do any of the work groups have anything to report?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So I finished my rough draft.
We're talking.
Lakeshore. Really rough. Like really, really rough. It nine or ten pages, believe it or not, which is too much, but we'll, we'll start hot, you know, large and cut it back.
Yeah.
Bill has it now and is going through it and he and I will probably touch base over the next few days and go through his changes and then we're on to adding people to, to look at it.
Okay.
Question for the group. One of the key provisions in the, in the plan is. Question for the group, one of the key provisions in the, in the plan, um, is. Two hundred and fifty feet setback from the water, and I picked that because that's where. I, yeah, I picked that because that's where most of the other towns used, and it's with the state. So. It's probably not optimal, we probably should go up Brooks and uphill and all of that, but maybe that's a.
I, I think politically, if we keep our Lake Shore zone. Contiguous with what the state defines it as. Um, we're gonna be on a lot safer ground in terms of getting fewer objections and getting it passed, so. I personally am in favor of that.
Okay.
And it's also the same as what the septic regulations are going to be, two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
Which is also based on the states.
Which is also.
Yes, yeah, the states, so.
But that, that, that's getting a, a lot of pushback, that septic reg.
Yeah.
Tremendous amount of. And, you know, I'm, I'm for the septic, trust me, uh, but you can certainly understand people's point of view.
Yeah.
So, just a question.
Can that draft posted?
No, not yet.
So, um, the. If you set the, the zoning boundary at two hundred and fifty feet from the border's edge. That means that a, a lot of lots that are around a lake then would. The rest of the property would be governed by whatever the rest, the, the other district is, correct?
Correct, yep.
So two fifty one falls into the zone that abuts.
Yep.
R three or whatever.
Most of it's R three. And then, but I think that we can tweak the language and tweak the, some of the parameters to, we might be able to handle that. I mean, there's different things, different ways to handle that, um, none of them optimal.
Yeah, well, one, one area that, that may be a little problematic is, is uh. Anywhere you're up near the village.
Sure.
And then down around uh, four A from the city line.
Yep.
All the way down the lake. You, you've got um, several areas, and particularly when you get closer to the um, southeastern end of the lake, the. The road itself seems to be like the natural. Space for um, that boundary to me, as you look at that.
We, we, we could definitely uh, change that, but as soon as you start. Adding that type of detail to the zone, then you're sort of, in some instances, going against the state. And.
Well, that would depend on what you did in your zone.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you, what kind of thing are you talking about?
It, it, it is, it is uh, an attempt to. What I, what I tried to do is that when I, we listened to the, one of the Lake Shore here for the planning board. I try, I tried to take what they said and put it into um, this document, now having said that. Much of this document will not stay the same, right? Because it's gonna go through a million iterations, and to answer Dave's question, the, the reason that it's not for public to look at. Is that it is rough, and it, and no one else but me has, has looked at this and, and Bill just started to, so. Uh, we're a long ways uh, before we re- release this to uh, anybody else. And I'm sure there's gonna be a tremendous amount of pushback, it's, it's a similar type of thing to the septic. Where you've got a lot of people around the lakes going, hey, we need to protect the water, this is what we need to do, and that's what this zoning district does. But there'll be a lot of people around the lakes going, are you kidding me? No way, you can't tell me blah, 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 so, we're a long ways away. It's, it's just a start.
So it is still in the working group phase?
Wo- working group of two.
That's fine, that's where it should, that's where we agreed. The, the process would start, with one or two people taking.
Right.
A very rough subject to change, first crack at it.
Respond to it, so the, the next thing after Bill and I make our changes, uh, based on his uh, feedback. Then we'll probably add one, uh, probably two, maybe three other people, and we'll go to the Lake Association and say, alright. Give me a guinea pig from Mascoma Lake Association, give me a guinea pig from uh, Crystal, whatever, and then we'll. Go through the whole thing again, and then at that point, I, I was mentioning to Bill, or I think in an email. Uh, at that point, we might wanna bring it back to this group and say, okay, how stupid are we? You know?
Yeah.
How close did we get?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't think it's productive or a, a good use of the board's time.
Yep.
To take the first draft and start to tear it apart, or even the second draft.
Right, right. There was an interesting piece that I had, I think I gleaned it from uh, AKA Stol, uh, from, I think it was Alton. Uh, where the, the setbacks uh, adjust based on the number of feet you have on the shore. Sort of an interesting way to approach it, so if you have sixty to eighty, setback is this, if you have more than eighty to, to a hundred, your setback is this. Which would go a long ways, I think, to reducing the setbacks to these little teeny lots, so it might help.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so, I stole that.
Okay, any other work group have anything to report?
One question on that, uh, when it's released to the uh, Mascoma and Crystal Lake Associations. Uh, shouldn't it be released to the rest of the public?
No, no.
Why not?
Dave, because we're so far away from this being remotely making sense. There, there's, there's need.
Members of the public.
No. It's still, David, it's not gonna happen.
Cause it hasn't got, it's not even coming to the planning board at that point.
It's just asking for input from the Lake Association.
Right.
Well, and then you're gonna. Releasing it to the public, you need to release it to the whole public.
We are not releasing it to the public.
You are, if you do it to the Lake Associations.
Dave, I don't think you heard what I said, what I said was that we would get an additional two people. One from each Lake Association to look at the plan and add to our working group. We're not going to release it to the association, it is a working group of two now, and it will be a working group of four. Um, in, in a couple of weeks, that's all it is. And I agree with you that as soon as it gets released to the public, absolutely, but it's not gonna get released to the public until it comes to the planning board. And the planning board hasn't seen it.
And we spent a lot of time discussing the process. By which these working groups would formulate the draft regulations. And releasing it to the public at this point, or at any point prior to. It coming before the planning board is not going to happen, and if you feel that's inappropriate. I invite you to file a ninety one A request.
Um, I may have to do that, um, what is the process for deciding who is. In that larger uh, working group?
It's up to the chair of the working group, who in this case happens to be Brad Rich.
I mean, I love Brad Rich, but uh, but I disagree with this process.
Well, I'm sorry, this is the process that the board adopted after much discussion and in public. And if you disagree with the board, so be it.
We also could discuss over a brew at some point if you wanted to.
I'll take you up on that.
Alright.
Okay, um, any other reports?
Quick, quick one on R five, I've got, I've got the uh, workforce housing. State for twenty twenty four that I want, cause, and I'm, I'm giving it out to you because. My reading of the regulations is not what Resilience's reading of the regulations were. About where, where workforce housing has to be. They said it has to be in the largest area, zoning area, which R five is for us. That's not what the regulation, that's not what the, that's not what the RSI says.
Is it the most dense?
No, it says workforce housing to be loca- located in a majority. But not necessarily all the land area that is zoned to permit residential uses. Which means if the Lake Shore District, if you're allowing it in the Lake Shore District, you're allowing it in the R one, you're allowing it in the R three. Then that's, and Shaker, and Eastman, that's a larger district than R five is. If we allow it all those places, it doesn't mean it just has to be in R five. Right, it means if the majority of the area. You can do workforce housing in, which you could in R one with no problem at all. You'd probably do in R five, R three with no problem at all, is larger area than the R five district is. So we could probably at least manipulate through that where we don't have to come up with, because if you look at what I sent out. It's like three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Or a, a uh, two bedroom workforce housing, yeah, three hundred and, what is it? Price. Two hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. You can't build in the R five, two hundred and sixty one thousand dollars workforce housing.
You couldn't. You can't build anything there other than.
Right.
An ADU maybe.
Exactly, so, but you could in the R one, the R five. No, I'm sorry, I'm, in the R one, you can't.
No, you can't.
Sure you can, cause you could be on town water.
You, if you had two hundred and sixty one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You could not buy a lot and put a house up in the R one for that kind of money, you need more money.
I think I agree with Tim on this one.
You don't think so, you have a mobile home? That's what I mean, manufactured housing. Just the land itself, with, with. One acre?
Unless you buy Shed Street.
No, if, if you're on town water and sewer.
Quarter acre. But it's the market rate. For a quarter acre in, in town. I'm just telling. Yeah, that's, that's the issue there. Right, that is the issue. Yeah, but today, but today's market rate. A lock-in.
Probably eighty thousand.
Downtown Enfield. Right, in R five, in the R five district, five acres is assessed at a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. That's one of the bizarre things in the assessment, by the way, which I'd love to bring up, is why is it that six acres. In the R three district that you could subdivide is actually assessed for less than. Six acres in the R five that you can't subdivide.
Back to your original point in this, I still don't quite understand what you're telling me.
But I'm telling you that we, we originally thought that we were gonna have to put, we would have to come up with a, a way. To do workforce housing in R five, cause that's what the RSA says you had to do according to Resilience. And that's not what actually it says.
Okay.
The other thing which was, I, I was at a meeting, it wasn't a town meeting of any sort. Where there were a bunch of people there, and the question they asked me is, why is there an R five district? Why, why is there a need to make it that hard to build? That you have to have that a major portion of the town is in an R five district, if you wanna own five acres, that's cool. But why wouldn't the maximum we would want, other than a conservation, be R three?
Well, then why, why the three?
I mean, it's, it's an arbitrary member.
That was adopted in nineteen nine. Right, and we know, and it, it was like, we made, we said, okay, the center's here, it's going to be R one, and the further you get away from the center of town. The bigger your lot has to be. Um, and that's just, I'm throwing it out there because I had three or four people ask me the same thing, ask me, but why, why do you need, why do. We mandate that you have five acres?
I think that's a, a really good, um. Um, high elevation theoretical.
Yeah.
Philosophical question to ask, that we should maybe try to provide Dan a little, a little guidance on.
Yeah, I, I, I think the limiting factor should be the land itself. Not an arbitrary five acres, or it could be ten acres, or isn't it like. Forty acres in line? It's some, it's some ridiculous.
Areas and there's.
And there's no, there's no reason for it, other than to discourage the building of housing.
But what it does discourage, what it does encourage though, right behind you, you, Dave, uh, David.
Yep.
On, uh, Palmer Road.
Right.
Palmer Road.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That, I think, is our poster child.
Oh, yeah, it is.
We do not want to encourage.
Absolutely, they're all five acre lots.
Absolutely, we don't want that.
Yeah.
And for the record. Why I particularly object to that result that our current zoning ordinance affects is that. Well, you might say those houses are all along Palmer Road, probably up fairly close to.
They are, yeah.
And all the land behind it is, is wooded lot, and probably never been touched. But because it's split into, I'm guessing there are probably ten different acre.
Lot, yeah.
That means that you will never get uh, consensus amongst the property owners about how to man- manage the timber stand. Some, some will wanna post it against honey, some won't. See, you, you've got a very different approach to each one of those lots is for that sort of acreage, how to manage it.
And by building it like that, you've also cut wildlife corridors.
Well, you may not, now, unless there's fencing.
No, but, you know what I mean, there's, uh, because they're running, they're, they're running right next to houses where they don't wanna be running.
Yeah, so, um, wh- what I would like for us to come up with, investigate, find out, are there other mechanisms? That result in a property owner being satisfied with what they can do with their lot in terms of subdividing and this. You know, building on it, but yet. Preserve the bulk of the property as, as open space and contiguous open space.
Well, that would be the cost of developments.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one we have in the books is not great, I, it was modified from one that was even worse and, um. And, but it needs a complete rewrite, and hopefully your friends will come up with something.
Hopefully.
And so if you have, if, if you had a good, well-written cluster development, um, provision. I would think a hundred acre lot would enable you to build on, say, say twenty percent of, I'm just picking. So theoretically, maybe twenty acres you could, you could build on it, and then if that was. Not constrained by lot size, but by the characteristics of the land. Um, would, would that fly, same scenario like that?
That is a cluster development.
Well, but it hasn't been built.
It has a lot of.
It, it was, it was.
The issues you ran into.
We have one person at a time talking, please. Linda?
Yeah, it was proposed.
It, it was proposed, and that was the Iron Man development.
No, that was never a cluster. That was never proposed as a cluster.
Individual units.
No, no, even the original was not.
That's what I mean, it was fifty six individual.
They were scattered over the whole.
They were. Scattered over the entire property.
Fieldstone Ridge.
That's the one, that's the only one, you're right, it's Fieldstone.
Where's that?
Methodist, Methodist Hill.
Oh.
Right next to Wheelback.
Yeah, that's the, that's been the, actually, the only cluster we've ever approved as a cluster.
Well, anyway, in theory, um, I would like to see us head down that path.
Yeah.
As to how you, the mechanisms that go into making that happen and so forth, I, I don't know what they are, but. But, and, and then to take that a little further, if we did that. In other words, say you could develop any, any of your, any size lot.
Right.
Uh, over a certain acreage perhaps, I don't know, if you're limited to twenty percent of the, the land area. Um, I don't know that we'd need an R three and R, or even an R one, you just, it's the rule zone, right? Um, I don't know that we need an R three and R, or even an R one, you just, it's the rural zone, right?
Yeah. Yeah, if you said that this area of the town is the rural zone, without having a.
Yeah.
I guess without having an acreage limit, so if Kurt wants to have twenty acres, he can have twenty acres.
Well, if you had a twenty acre parcel, maybe you can only develop ten percent of that, so.
No, no, I mean, he's gonna have a single family home on a twenty acre, and that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not gonna tell you, you can't do that.
Well. Kind of say someone owns. Well. Are you freezing the lots as they currently are?
Yeah.
By that, and then you have to have X amount of acreage per lot?
Why would you have to freeze it? Because you, because you could combine lots, you could join them together.
Well, you're freezing the minimum size as they currently are. So.
No, no, um, a- again, we're talking really high.
We're talking thirty thousand. I know what you mean, I've got twenty acres, I can subdivide it into a hundred lots.
Right, right.
Well. If that's what your regulation permitted, but what I'm suggesting.
That's what, that's, that's it, what's the next step?
The next step.
What does that lead to?
What I'm suggesting is a. Over above a, I I think, I think, over above a certain size lot.
Yep.
Could be five, I don't know what it might be, but. If you've got a twenty acre lot, let's say it's over that limit, you can develop twenty percent of that lot, the rest of it has to stay.
You can, yeah, whatever the, whatever that twenty percent will sustain.
Yes.
Along with the septic being a part of the other eight.
That would give you five acre you could work with on a twenty acre lot.
Right.
Although, three acres of that might be wetland or, you know, ledge and steep slope, and then that leaves you with a, whatever.
Well, I mean, it's, anyways, it's. That theory just, I would need to see more detail.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we're still at the thirty thousand foot.
Interesting philosophical discussion.
Right.
Did I see your hand raise, Sharon?
No, no, sorry, I was just.
Okay, yeah.
But if I have a a hundred acre lot out there somewhere. Um. You can imagine the objection that some owners would have to a scenario like that. Which is.
Oh, that I can only develop twenty percent of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think.
But if I say to you, you can put as much, as many units as you want on the twenty percent, then there might not be as much of a pushback.
I think that'd be the trade off.
As long as eighty percent of that stays. Locked in as wildlife for whatever you want to call it, concerned.
And then eighty percent. Wouldn't, wouldn't even have to stay, it wouldn't even have to be part of the ownership of the park that you develop. By the way, if you put a little cluster development in that twenty acres. The other eighty acres. Uh, you could sell to somebody else if you wanted to, but it has a conservation easement or something that.
It can't be developed.
Can't be developed. Yeah.
Remember, previous conversations having to do with R five district as people wanting. Uh, preservation. Um, and. I understand, everything you're saying makes sense. I think the devil in the details that you gentlemen and Linda, excuse me. Have to work out is. What door are you opening for someone to develop the twenty acres out of a hundred if they can do whatever they want? Can they put? Two hundred units in there? Can they put seventy five foot buildings in there? That would. Even if it's only twenty percent, twenty acres of a hundred, it significantly changes. That property and anybody who lives around that property. So. You know, if you're talking about, okay, you can have a house with, uh, uh, what is it? Four units, I don't remember what that was called.
Fourplex.
Yeah, a fourplex or a duplex or a threeplex.
Garden of earth.
A whole different bailiwick.
Yep.
So, as you're discussing this, yeah. Preserving, developing twenty percent of it makes sense. But it also depends on what door you open for them, how far, how much can they develop that twenty percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed, agreed a hundred percent, and there are natural limitations such as. The availability of water and septic, and we would also, on a development like that, would have to look at. Um, things like roads.
Yeah.
And the ability of the town to, and stormwater, all all sorts of stuff. Which are limiting factors. And certainly there could be, and probably should be, some sort of a height restriction. Um, and maybe we would say you couldn't build more than a fourplex. You could have five fourplexes, but you could not build a twenty or a thirty unit. Um, apartment building, and I, you know, as you say, the devil is in the details. And right now, we're just looking at it from thirty thousand feet. And over the next several months, we will drill down and. The working group will come up with a possible recommendation, which will then get. Looked at and refined and revised. And, you know, get to a point where we think it makes sense and. Hopefully, we are able to understand all of the unintended consequences. And that's one thing that we need to look, look at. And, you know, then finally, we'll put it before the town after we have, you know, a series of. Informational meetings and public meetings, but, you know, right now, this is just up in the ether. But I I do hear, I do hear what you're saying, and, you know, as we zoom in on this. Um, we'll be looking at many, if not all, of the things that you're suggesting. And probably more.
Yeah, because this isn't, this isn't zone based. This could happen, and you could do this in any zone. I mean, right now, there's, there's twenty acre lots in the R five, in the R one.
Yeah.
And you could do, and you could do, yeah, well, there's a seventy acre and a twenty five in the R one. Where you could do a cluster development, and eighty percent of it could be kept. Open space. Um. But we consider it a cluster development at that point.
And there's also the, the the details that you'll have to work through about, okay, what does it mean with a conservation easement on a, on the eighty percent? How does that stay in perpetu- perpetuity and how?
You have to give it to a, I would say you'd have to give it to an organization.
Yeah.
That's just me.
Yeah.
Saying that.
Legally, yeah.
Upper Valley Land Trust.
Legally, that's the only way to.
Or the National, or the New Hampshire Forest Protection, one of those organizations.
There has to be an organization that's willing to enforce it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's a DIT and the whole thing, so.
Yeah, it can't be changed, right?
Anything else on this topic before we move on?
Well, I just. You know, especially in the R five, when we're talking about propos, thinking about changes there. To go back and reread the master plan and see.
Yeah.
What's came out of the master plan for the rural character areas.
Mm-hmm, thank you for saying that. One of the things Eric and I have been talking about. Um, in format of the ordinance.
Yeah.
And and as with each zoning district. You start off with a purpose of the district. And. Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure where we'll end up on that, he and I, about. What we'd recommend to the board, but it could be something like where each district would have a series of. Whereas, you list all of the.
Mm-hmm.
The factors that go into the ultimate decision that we should have this district. And then, part of that was pulling these sections verbatim out of the master plan that apply. To the district, so they're right here, so, so that. The formatting or theory question I'm posing to you. Is. Do you copy the sections out of the master plan that apply to that district? The things that lead you to have the regulations. And put that in the zoning ordinance? Or do you just refer to the master plan by, say, page and 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 paragraph and underneath?
Well, the, the problem with the master plan is that it's conflicting by nature. You've got parts of the plan that talks about rural, you've got top parts of the plan that talks about increasing housing.
I would put both of those in.
Right, so, depending on who you talk to, you get a different opinion, you know, and and it was meant to be way up here. So, you could reference the, the master plan, but. It it's sort of.
Well, having done it two sections already, and with that method, I can tell you that. Uh, it's quite easy to pull out the sections that seem to be written for that section.
Yeah.
And so the question is again is. If we copy those out of the master plan and put them in there, and we all could agree as to which applies and which don't. Um, is that? I I think that is helpful in understanding why the regs are that follow.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
You're always saying. Someone says, well. Uh. You, did you read the master plan? Well, yeah, these are the sections, this is what the master plan sends.
Right.
I mean, that, that could actually be your opening paragraph or set of paragraphs. To each, uh, each, we'll call them zoning districts. Um, you know, Enfield's master plan of twenty twenty three says. Da da da, da da da, da da da.
Right.
And we know that the master plan is gonna be tweaked in five or ten years. And by having the actual verbiage. Um, in the zoning regs, we will know, or the people who are reading it, would know. Which master plan or what the language is that is being used. To shore up the zoning reg that follow. And, you know, of the, the master plan and the zoning regs are never gonna be. In exact parallel sequence, so I think quoting or cut and. Cut and paste. Um, is the way to go so that it is very clear, and people don't have to go searching through multiple documents.
Can I add something?
Yes.
I think Brad, Brad, it can happen, that you can have housing and you can have the master plan, because I think. Just like what I said about the type of housing you might have in a rural zone. The type of how, so you're gonna have housing in each of your zones. But the type of housing you have might depend, might vary. Have some considerations from the master plan for that particular zone. So. Personally, where I live on Maple Street, I like to, there's, it's all two-story houses. Three-story house might not be a bad idea, but a five-story house would be ridiculous, you would feel like you were dwarfed.
Yeah.
And so, you know, you're gonna consider each of the districts, what type of housing, you can still have your units. Uh, whether, and there's lots of different kinds of units, but they're gonna fit more with some zones than others.
Yeah.
Agreed. Anything else?
Well, I have a, um, I I have a thirty thousand foot question to put to you. Kind of touches on what Sharon was talking about. So, in thinking about the village district.
Yep.
Um, where we have town, water and sewer. And. Here we already know, there's, there's interest in buildings, the Shed Street property is a case in. Um. And. Whether by street or by district wide, I'm wondering. What should be the governor? What I mean by that is, uh, right now, the governor is, is lot size. And we, we've talked about not having lot size. Play as larger role in in the regulations that it has in the past. And letting the, the setbacks and the. Uh, parking requirements and so forth. Play more into the lot in terms of what you can actually build there. And without. Say, principal, single principal building per, per a lot, then that frees up a lot of creativity for someone to do something with a, with a parcel. Um, but when you have a, um. A development that is gonna drastically increase. The number of housing units on, on a particular street, or maybe just district wide. Is there a, uh, uh. Is there something else that we could use to, to say, and I'll just toss this out? You know, no, no single development can be done in this district that is gonna result in the. An increase in number of housing units above, say, twenty percent of what exists already. I'm just tossing that out as a, to give you an idea of. What else there might be that we could use. So that the town has the ability to have a, a, a very liberal. Uh, regulations about what you can do on your properties. But it also a nod towards, we don't wanna grow. Too quickly, too fast. So, that's, there's my question to you.
That's a good.
In theory, yes.
Fifteen thousand foot question.
In theory, yes. Um. And you put a limit. On the number of houses that could be built.
Oh, it's.
Because they, you know, they, what they're thrown out of court was the mobile homes. Saying that you can't have mobile homes in a district, because we don't want mobile homes, and that's a style.
An aesthetic.
Right, and that's a style issue.
Yeah.
Um.
Basically, a, a development, a fortiorum on developments.
Right.
Is what you're.
Yeah.
It's not a blanket, it's not a.
No, no, it's a limit.
But it's a limit.
Right.
And I. I don't. I think you, I don't know if you can do it indefinitely.
No.
Well, because usually there was like, only a certain time period until your sewer lines, all your water capacity. Got up to speed.
Right.
And then the courts say you had to take it off.
Right.
Remove your limitation, yeah. Your school districts and things of that nature.
Well, let me see if I understand the concept that you're putting forth. If in a certain part of town. Which is defined.
I really think in the village here.
Okay, in the village. Okay, a certain part of the village, you currently have a hundred units.
Yeah, say, say, say a street.
Okay, say a street.
And that's. Without getting into details about how you define.
So.
Just in theory, a street.
So, let's, or ease of computation. Let's say that our ordinance allows you to add ten percent.
Yeah.
Um, I as a developer could put in ten units.
Yeah.
And then six months later, you as a developer could put in eleven.
No, no. No, I, I, I think. I, I really, this is just a, a.
Yeah.
Yeah. My logistics of it is.
Cause you.
It's gonna.
You just give, you just gave preference to the first guy that got there.
Yeah, yeah, and he waits whatever time period, and then the next guy gets, gets to do more because.
No, no, because not if you've locked in what's there now.
Oh, well, if it's locked in on a, at, at this point in time.
Well, okay, so it, it, it's a locked in rather than a rolling.
Right.
What, what I meant was, no, no one development can add more than.
Ten percent to the total.
Say ten percent of the existing housing stock that's there.
Okay.
So, developer A, you can have your development, but you're limited to the ten, ten units.
Right.
In any given year.
Right.
So. Uh, if you had another developer in the same year, then he's also limited to the ten years. In that effect, if you add twenty.
But that's twenty, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Is it? Is it?
Well, I'm suggesting that that may be okay. I don't know.
Right, yeah.
And also. We shouldn't get hung up on this mechanism. I'm just asking, is there a mechanism other than lot size? And and I'd like to explore what that that could mean.
Yeah.
Do we have the time to explore all of the things we've talked about tonight instead of getting the work done? We're the one who wanted the work done and we can do it and we'll do it. But but.
But we're just starting, Linda, we're we're. This isn't. The mechanism we choose, whatever it is. Is gonna take some time to think through regardless. I I'm not saying we should come up with something that no one has ever thought of. That's probably a bad idea. You know, we wanted something that a mechanism that has stood up in the courts has. Been available for years and they they litigated the heck out of it and will it apply to Enfield? I don't know, but I just wish we could come up with something besides lot size.
We have to do it this year.
Well, not necessarily, no.
Cause we have a HOP grant that we need to.
I wonder if any other.
Well, we don't have a HOP grant yet.
I wonder if any other town has has based. Their zoning on anything but off. I wonder if it's been done.
Well, that's a general question, so if anybody runs across it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Didn't expect to come up with an answer to that.
No. No, but it's a good discussion, Paul, and you know, it's it's food for thought.
Good night to have.
Research.
It's a good night to have it, because there's nothing else on the.
Right.
On the agenda.
Um, any other working group reports? Okay. Hearing none, uh, we next go to update on the. Rewrite project. RFQ. Um. That went out, Rob, when? And to, why why don't you speak to when it went out and I know it's on the. Enfield Town website. And. Tell us where else it went to.
So, yes, so. There is a section of the town website. Request your proposals and qualifications right here.
Yep.
You'll see it here. RFQ and the HOP application as a courtesy. Those are put up and then emails were sent to all of the contractors on the pre-approved. Contractor list. Save for the only ones that I omitted from that list were the regional planning commissions that are not ours.
When did it go out?
Friday. Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago?
Yeah.
And have you heard from anybody?
I did get a clarifying question yesterday from one company out of Concord. So it would have been, let's say.
Rob, how many?
Two. Twenty fifth.
Wow, okay.
About how many uh firms are we talking?
Let's say it was at least about twenty. As I said, the the regional planning commissions are all on that list for each region. But ours is the Republic Valley Lake Sonoma, so I sent it to them. But I didn't send it to North Country Council. Cause they're not gonna work for us. That's it's not in their.
Yeah.
Mission. So, um. We will keep you up to date. The the deadline for submissions, you can see it right there. November fifteen, right there.
I mean, do these things typically come in at the last minute type of thing? Last week, few days prior.
I mean, I was encouraged to actually get a clarifying question from a contractor yesterday.
Yeah. We should probably, now that I think about it, ask for um them to send us a letter of intent. You know, so then we'd know who's who's probably gonna submit.
Hear from them by the fifteenth. Hopefully, they'll send us a.
Actually. You know, you could also. Ask people to send us a letter of intent now, even after the RFB.
I'm hoping that we'll get some response from the contractors by next Friday.
Right, yeah.
From this Friday.
Let's see how it goes.
And Dave. You you had a response from uh resilience, did you not? Uh, what'd they say about this?
We had a response? Oh, I I had a conversation with them. Um, in which I told them that the board had decided that it wanted to. Put the um contract out to bid. Um, based on A, the desire of the board and B, the town's requirement. That contracts over, I think it's ten thousand dollars. Uh, be put up for bid. And it was like, we had the conversation and Steve said, I understand. And that's where we left it.
And then he said, but if I get a hell of a job, I may have to take.
He did say that too, you're right.
Very important piece.
Yep, yep.
Cause we could end up with no one.
Hopefully, that will not happen and.
Likely, but.
Not likely, but, you know, in in the real world. If you're running a business and.
You gotta take the work where you can get it.
And you take a. Job worth. Let me just say a hundred thousand dollars as a round number. Um, that's contingent on getting a grant. And. You know that there's not going to be. Well, if the grant comes through, that you're gonna have that piece of business. Versus. The same scenario, but you don't know that if the grant comes through, you're gonna get that piece of business.
Right.
The odds of um. Being left without any work increase.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, what? When's the grant award supposed to be?
Uh, I believe sometime in December is what they led us to believe, definitely by the end of the year. Which to me means December.
Probably mean December thirty-first.
Very possibly. Any other questions on the RFQ?
Nope.
Okay, amendments for twenty twenty-five. Um. I'm gonna start with what I was thinking about. Which was what I originally, or what we all originally thought was the easy amendment. Which was, let's get rid of the Route Four District and replace it with CB.
Yep, yep.
That's great, except. When we go with the CB, we have to go with the allowed uses and. Lot sizes that are inherent in the CB district. The uses, I think, we're probably okay on. Uh, multifamily is a special exception rather than a by right as it is in R one. But we're talking about um one acre minimum. For on lot water and sewer and half acre. For community uh or municipal water and sewer. So we have this um. Limiting factor, which um. In my opinion, we need to tweak. The CB. As well. Because if we don't, then we've created a district that has. Let's, for argument's sake, call it half acre because. We have water and sewer going all the way up to the Canaan Town Line. And there's the possibility of that development behind Shaker Auto. And that complex that we've. That Rob has mentioned and they might. Or might not like the idea of. Um. Half acre when the R one has quarter acre, so. But.
Name called the ZBA. Like anybody else.
Yeah.
It's it's in the seat, it's. It's what it was prior to the Route One uh Route Four Districts. It just. I mean, what is? What would be the new CB district boundary lines from Canaan? Down for both sides of.
Route four.
Probably to the rail trail, I think.
Yeah, yeah, to the rail trail and to the town line.
Um, and then to the town line going north. Up on the map.
Yep.
Um, and then towards to the east, I mean, excuse me, to the west. How far does it go?
Enfield uh garage, basically.
Yeah.
No, it comes to the top of the.
Does go, okay, it does go to the top.
Yeah, yeah.
It it takes in, I think, well, it takes in my land, but it might take in the one that was.
Yeah, yeah, actually.
At last, Karen's Restaurant, I guess.
Right.
Years ago. I think it goes to where. That was now apartments in the big park in front, just a little bit up on you.
Sure, it does.
Yeah, it goes, one of those lines here, it's one side of that property is in it and the other one's not, it doesn't.
Right there, right here. Just beyond County Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it doesn't get that far.
Okay.
I think the one you're talking about, Kurt, I think that's.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
The Murphy.
Or may maybe it's the that road, that private road that goes down.
Against the roof, that one.
That's Murphy.
It's that little split.
All we're talking about is just adding purple to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Adding what?
Purple will become red, right? The purple will become.
Yeah.
That's exactly what it is, yeah. Yeah.
What's the purple now?
Our Route Four Districts.
Route Four Districts.
Also restrictions that no business would want to deal with.
We've got, uh, we've got just in work. One, one year, basically. Of if this, if if whatever we propose changes.
We can change it.
Changes. Get passed at the meeting. Right, and that's a year for that. Do a CB rewrite. Yes.
Yep.
CB rewrite. So what's worse? Uh, having a little larger lot sizes, so we don't have to tweak those wording, that wording. Uh, for a year or leave the Route Four District in place for a year, which Rob would be. More impactful.
No.
I I'm not suggesting that we leave the the Route Four in place.
No, we just. Heard everything to CB and then and then. And deal with it later. And deal with it later. Right.
Right.
Cause we know we're gonna get rid of the Route Four, so it might as well get rid of it now. Right.
Yeah.
And then any any development that wants to do a quarter acre lot, based like R one, that goes to zoning board. Right. Until we, another year later, we make that change and say, oh, that's a good idea, man, we should do that. Well, and that. Incremental changes. My my. But, and tell me if I'm wrong, is they're really more interested in the Canaan side than they are in the Enfield side. And that's a bigger issue because. It's not up to us whether or not they can hook up to the sewer. At that point, it's up to the, it's up to Canaan and Lebanon. Whether or not they can hook up to.
Right, so we shouldn't be making.
So it's not our problem.
Right, and one, to me philosophically, we shouldn't even be thinking about making changes.
Right.
With developments that hasn't even been.
Right.
Before us.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Just because somebody might want to do something.
Right.
That applies to the whole town.
Right, so, yeah, just get rid.
Every law in town, somebody might wanna do something.
Right.
Like the regs says you can't do.
Right.
I I I I guess my, the reason that I thought of this is because we decided that. In the R one. That has water and sewer, we could reduce the acreage to quarter acre. And why would we not wanna do a similar thing? In. The CB. Which would include the Route Four. Once we get rid of the Route Four.
I I, the only objection I would have, David, is just. That article would get a little larger because we'd have the words to change, you know?
It would have to be a a different article.
Separate article.
It'd be a separate article where one might pass and the other might not.
Well, no, no, I don't think, I think you could. You could say, we're gonna combine the CB district with the R four district. Are you in favor of combining the CB and the R four? Into a new CB district? And then provide the wordings that would be changed, you know, I could see it being one article, but it's just.
I think I'll always say separate it.
It's it's more than just um. If you told you guys it's not gonna be simple.
No, no, nothing ever is.
So I would just leave it, just change the CB, get rid of the Route Four District.
Yeah.
And then deal with.
You know, they put the CB back to where it was, basically.
Be nicer than.
Yeah, yeah. And then the next year we do, we just change one word or we'll change one half acre to one quarter acre.
And.
Yeah. One little word change.
Rob, i- if. If um if the CB district extended all the way out through four. And the half acre was still in place, would we still be in a better place than we are right now with existing regs? In terms of a deva- of of a business wanting to do something next year?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
That was right in that article.
I have some language ready on that.
Okay. You should put in the year that if I change. At at the point at the. Um, when when this community bus. Business district CB. At this point in time, as it existed at this X date, on this X date.
Well. What existing work is that doing?
What is that? Who's that?
Well, because it's, we changed it, it was originally in the CB, became Route Four. Now we wanna go back to CB. But it's like someone's, but what boundaries are you going to use? It has to be the CB as it existed.
Impact before we, the day before.
The day prior to.
The day before.
Yeah, that's how I mean. Yeah, it's it's defines it as, this is where the boundary lines are.
Yeah.
Well, maybe not. Maybe just don't go back.
The two hundred fifteen.
Going back.
Told you, you had to do multi. Um, the way that I've got it worded now, everything that's in the Route Four District. Now. Become CB.
Right.
Yeah, so just take out the word back to the zone, you know?
I say we turn the zone district. Back to the community business.
You don't, I don't think you need that.
We don't need back.
No, no.
No.
No, cause that, cause you're going back to what, or to what, at what point in time? That's where that's where you need the point in time.
Exactly, get rid of the word back and that's it.
Well, I mean, it you'll need some other wording changes, but the theory is that. You you just wanna absorb the Route Four District into the CB District.
That's what I thought I had here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just don't do the back part.
So get get rid of back and any other wording changes?
No, looks good to me.
And return, and the return this is shall become.
You wanna?
The second power, the second line. Uh, Route Four District and return should be then, the Route Four District. Shall become part of.
You guys should work on this and bring it back now.
Yeah, yeah, I need some wordsmithing.
Come see me.
Yeah.
We need.
Just email to me and all.
You'll fix it.
So do I have a public hearing first, first meeting in December?
Hmm.
Second meeting in December?
Well, let's let's see how far we get on on these articles tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, we have one that we need to wordsmith a little bit.
Yep.
So we're looking at that in our second meeting.
On the twentieth.
Uh, the twentieth of November. Why don't you call up, um, the next one?
Uh, ADUs. Only thing that I changed on the ADU was we added Kurt's definition down here of, um, condition space. Well, that's how I deleted the word kitchen space, but this was your definition that you sent me.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Definition.
I could read it though.
It's a condition space. You can't read it?
No.
Uh, let's see.
Okay.
Rob, can you start at the top and let us all read it? Do we need rural character? Can't just be character? Because you're gonna have ADUs in the rural parts of town, and you're gonna have ADUs in what we've been calling the village part and everywhere in between.
Line of being.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, ADUs are permitted in all parts of town, so, yeah. Yeah.
It's all rural. We all use. It's all rural, it's like we keep shaving.
I put that in there to, to kinda match it with the, uh, with, with the master plan.
Yeah.
Uh, can I? Just a quick question that may help Brad here on this issue. Um, would we wanna not allow ADUs around the lake?
Um, I saw that quite a bit in the different plans I saw, so maybe.
I don't think you can, I think it's state law.
I think that might be.
Law, yeah.
Anywhere in a, a single family home is allowed, state law allows ADUs.
Uh huh, right, yeah.
Yeah.
But you've got the limiting factors of setbacks and.
That's.
Yeah, but we could, we could, in the Lake District, go back to the original eight hundred square feet, only one, not two, something like that.
That's a possibility.
Food for thought, move on, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, before we move on, um, maybe in that second sentence, could we say, these units will improve the inventory of smaller housing while maintaining the character of the community? Little, little more positive?
I'm fine with that.
Yep, sure.
Hmm, that's a good idea.
Yes, the master.
Oh, you're, you're running a PDF, aren't you, so you can't, you can't do any.
It's a limitation we've got with the thing right now. I suppose I could get the word up on here, but, uh, we've been hesitant to do that because of obvious reasons.
Right.
But we'll, uh, we'll, we'll have the notes from the minute, so I can certainly make those changes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
Looks like, uh, Dr. Buthay has a question.
Oh, okay. David, you have a question, a comment?
Yeah, this, uh, goes back to, uh, uh, one or two steps back in the previous discussion. It's been, the hand's been up since then. Um, if you're thinking of changing the wording of a zoning uh, this year and then changing it again next year, why don't you just do it both steps, uh, at the same time?
People wanna respond?
Depends how long the ballot gets.
My interest was, uh, in this topic was about Route Four and CB was simply to, uh, a nod, in fact, that we got a year that we could have some business development uh, wanting to happen out on Route Four, and right now the Route Four District regulations are stifling that.
And, you know, and then we may also have other changes in the CB District that, uh, we would also like to propose and just do it as a complete package of CB changes during part, as part of the complete rewrite.
And another reason is that optimistic as we are, we don't have a guarantee that the rewrite will pass the first time we bring it before the voters. So while in theory, we would bring the rewrite in twenty twenty six, if it fails, it could be twenty twenty seven or twenty twenty eight before we finally get it tweaked to the point where the town will pass it. And as Tim said, getting this change or eliminating the Route Four District because it's been an impediment to development is a high priority for the board. Admittedly, you know, doing it in two steps is not the best way to do it, and that's kind of what I was getting at when I raised the question of the lot size in CB District. But, um, you know, I, I think members of the board make a good argument that we should propose a minimal but significant change on the twenty twenty five warrant, and do the rest in the zoning rewrite. Did that answer your question sufficiently?
Partially, um, it still seems like, um, you're do- doing it in one step seems much clearer than, uh, than, than divvying it up.
Well, yeah, but if, if we're going to do it in one step, we would then probably have to change the, um, the lot area requirement in the community business district as well, which would require another zoning article or amendment on the, on the warrant. And if, if one fails and the other passes, um, it, it leaves you in sort of a conundrum because you need them both to pass. Is that making sense? Am I, am I?
We're, we're convincing ourselves of, of the answer to this question.
Well, I mean, just, I mean, just, I'm not comfortable with just, oh, let's just change the, the zoning, the, uh, lot size and the CB on just a, a comment that was thrown out. Too, I mean, because that could have a lot of repercussions throughout the whole CB District.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I'd rather look, look at the CB District as a whole and see what's changes should be made as a package.
Right.
So presently.
But, but the Route Four District is not working, it's an impediment to what we wanted.
Yeah.
So.
So just so I understand it, pre- at present, in the R one, where we have town, water and sewer, you've got quarter acre lot sizes, got that. In the CB, which is right in the middle of the village and, and, and is surrounded by R one, we currently have half acre lot size.
And.
Yeah.
And one acre.
One acre if you're not on, you know.
Right.
Whi- which is the way R one used to be before we changed it.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Seems a bit backwards to me.
What?
They are.
Seems a bit backwards to me, that a residential area should be reduced to a quarter acre, so more dense than a commercial business district that could, um, could better support, um, density, because you want your density where Route Four is. Because if you have your density on Maple Street, we're having a heck of a problem getting out now. When you, there's the biggest problem with Maple Street, Flanders Street, and I'm sure there's other streets going the other direction. We have no alternative way to get around that intersection. So the more density you put in our, in R one, the more our traffic's gonna back up and, and really cause a problem. Even with a turnaround, that's not gonna come for probably fifteen years.
The quarter acre lot in the R one is already done deal last two years ago, so.
Doesn't make sense to have your CB District be less.
But we wanna make that change to the CB, but not yet, because we're trying to combine, we'll do it next year.
If, if, but, it, on, on the other hand, I, I think Dave's comments about, about perhaps the zoning ordinance rewrite doesn't pass in twenty six, and then we'll wait another year and so forth. That, that does shed a different light on the, on the task here. And, and I wonder if it might not be worth the wordsmithing group to try to break this nut, let CB Route Four change into the quarter acre lot size, and see if we couldn't come up with a single ordinance, a, a single warrant article that, that accomplishes that.
Oh, I mean, just writing it as simple, well, to me is, what are the repercussions of doing that? Um, you know, just in.
I know, I know.
Yeah, I was just.
So.
Third ga- ga- game it out, tell us what you can think of might be the repercussions.
It's just, I would have to look at exactly what lots are covered, and they're covered CB, CB District, because it's not just the Route Four, it's, it goes beyond, you know, it's more than just that. And, um, does it go beyond the water sewer lines?
Well, it doesn't, and, and we know that, and it's also, it's also right in the middle of everywhere else it's a quarter acre. So I, I, I don't see any repercussions from halfway down Dry Ridge Hill all the way to where the Route Four District starts, because I believe.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I mean, I would just like to see back in front of me with the lot lines and the boundaries of the CB District.
What you guys gonna?
All right, Kurt?
Yeah, yeah.
Would, would, would you take a look at the zoning map?
Yeah.
And the boundaries are the current CB plus the current Route Four. And at our next meeting, tell us what you think, and in the interim, um, the wordsmithing group, who, whoever that is, I guess. Who?
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
You?
To look at it, yeah.
Okay.
And where the, the water sewer lines fall within that district.
Yeah. Or the potential for hooking into water sewer, because we know that, um, the area where the water and sewer were extended a few years ago, um, you don't have branches going off to.
Well, it has to be what's in the ground right now.
Yes, okay.
So.
Yeah.
Not what's maybe someday.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to just think out loud and see if I have, understand this. So in my end of Route Four, the CB District goes back two hundred and fifty feet from Route Four, or three hundred?
I think it's three fifty.
Three fifty, okay, three hundred and fifty feet. And does it take that all the way through town? And get all the way to the Canaan line, or does it change shape? Because it's defined in, in the western part of Route Four as three hundred and fifty feet back.
It, it changes, it changes.
So, so you would be.
Well, with water sewer.
You would be adding that whole development.
Yeah.
Strip, you'd be adding the.
That whole purple.
Full purple. And, okay.
Well, and the red would be quarter acre where, where there is a water sewer line, probably sewer line, whatever the wording is.
Yeah.
Yeah, because up on Dry, up at, you know, your end of it on Dry Ridge, there is no municipal sewer.
No. Um.
So I, I think you'll find no unintended consequences in the pink. The question is, is there anything in the purple that we would regret having changed to quarter acre? My guess is no, but you're gonna look at that.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, just see what's.
Yeah.
Where the line is and, you know, and then a large development would extend the line of, at, at their expense if needed.
Obviously, at their expense, yeah.
Now, doesn't. Doesn't, uh, Enfield have some say if, you said the, whether Canaan, something built up for the Canaan line? Um, that decision was Lebanon's and Canaan's. But don't we have some say?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, we did, we did. Oh, yeah, we, we have say, what I'm saying is, that can't happen unless Canaan and Lebanon agree to it, because it's Lebanon's and Canaan does not have a municipal agreement. Yeah, it would be up to us whether or not they could act.
Right.
We would get consulted to as a regional impact.
Right.
From that perspective, but.
Well, no, we could say no. Unless they're going to give extra capacity to Canaan, they can't use our capacity unless we say yes.
Right.
Yes.
Using our capacity.
No, they could not use our capacity without asking us.
Well, plus the question would be, are the sewer mains of sufficient size to carry all of what Canaan generates?
There. That's a good question, the answer's probably yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But, um, I think it should be looked at with an open mind, because extending a, a sewer system into another community, it's just a regional extension of a utility, it doesn't have to be quite as complicated as I think we're making it out to be. And, and it could have a considerable benefit for the ratepayers in town here.
Yeah.
More customers. I'm not saying it all work, it would necessarily be the case, but it needs to be looked at with a.
No, I agree.
And it's not our decision anyways.
Not this board.
Well, you know, the, the, the first decision point would be between Lebanon and Canaan to see if Lebanon would actually let them hook onto it. And then, once that happens, I would think then it would come to Enfield, and we have our say.
No, 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 for developments in Canaan.
As to whether they can hook up.
As to whether they can hook up to.
Well, it wouldn't be this board.
No, 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 I don't mean, I don't mean this board.
This select board.
I'm just saying they would, you know, they would have to come to Enfield, to the town of Enfield, as Dan says, the select board.
Yeah, right.
And then the select board would make a decision as to whether that's something that we would, um, you know, whether it could, the piping could handle it, whether it's beneficial or not beneficial, or whether we charge them or whatever.
What's on the screen?
Yeah, we need to walk away from that. Because we're at ADUs.
Yeah, and we get sidetracked here. Oh, yeah, we, we had to go back, step back to get a question answered.
Yeah.
My calendar's showing the meeting on the twentieth, is it seven?
Yeah.
Just a reminder. Because someone else will be in this room.
Yeah.
Previously.
You're leaning up against my bed, Tom.
Yeah, you're on your own.
Right, oh my God, probably don't.
Well, I've studied this enough.
See if I can move it out, I'm not.
Okay.
We're savvy here.
Um, on point three, we still have the, um, occupancy by the licensed professional. Remember, we talked about that at our last meeting, it's a, it's a grammatical issue.
Well, they'd be by it, okay.
So our last week's change, or last week's change would have not been put in here.
That would, on this one, that change was not carried.
What are the changes that we missing?
Um.
On number three?
You don't have to be a licensed professional to occupy it.
Right, it's punctuation, that's right.
Um. Why do we say and further? Why don't we just say, um, the new system, um, must be installed prior to occupancy.
End of question. Yeah.
Get rid of the licensed professional.
Right, yeah, that, we don't need that word.
And, and get rid of further.
Yeah.
And get rid of and, and just start the next sentence, the system must be installed prior to occupancy.
Sure.
Well, how would it read?
It would read, unlock. It would read, on lots not served by town sewer, the property owner shall obtain DES approval. For a properly sized, how about for a new, properly sized onsite sewage disposal system designed. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, period. The system must be installed prior to occupancy, period.
Right.
Oh, I might know this from, oh, but I wasn't doing this, um, that's assuming that the existing system cannot handle the expanded use.
Right, yeah, exactly, that's why it's, it's DES approval.
It's kind of how that's worded. But it's saying DES approval for a new system. What if DES approves the existing system?
Okay.
They're good.
They're good, and it's installed already.
Yeah. Well, did, did, did we talk about how you, you got a three bedroom house? You've got a three bedroom design septic system, and it would say that on the permit, yes, Rob?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you're gonna add two eighty use, you're gonna add two more bedrooms.
Yeah.
Or it could even be three more bedrooms.
Yeah.
Um, currently, we, I think I heard the way ordinance is written currently. Uh, as long as you didn't have any problems with that.
Right.
Septic system, it could handle the six bedrooms, even though it's designed for three. What we're saying here, though, is that we wanna, uh, we wanna require you to upgrade your septic system to the number of bedrooms you're gonna end up with.
Right, right. Because septic system failures are not easy to spot.
Yeah.
That was our rationale.
That is good rationale, uh, so we, we, we kinda need to, that's not really clear in that paragraph.
Oh, I, I just think that, uh, shall obtain DES approval for a properly sized onsite sewage disposal system.
Design.
Design prior to, so whatever's in the ground has to be compatible with what you want to do for a.
Yeah, right, exactly.
It doesn't have to be new in the ground.
No.
It just has to match.
That's why we got rid of the word new.
Yeah.
Somehow we need to put the word bedroom in there.
What, what if we also got rid of the word design? So DES would have to approve either what's in the ground.
Yeah, just a DES approval for.
Or if DES does not approve what's in the ground, then you'd have to get a new, um, a new design.
Yeah.
And then we would say, a new system must be installed, or if, maybe if required. A new system must be installed prior to occupancy.
I don't think DES does that. At least I'm asking, do, does DES, definitely they do that. They're not gonna come up here and, all they're gonna do, and.
They're gonna look at the.
We could do that at the town level, is say, you get a three bedroom septic permit, and you get a six proposed bedroom structure. That don't match.
So should it say she'll obtain, um, building, building inspector's approval, building inspector approval?
Well, Rob, aren't there some cases where DES has jurisdiction over a septic? And other cases in which the town has jurisdiction, depending on, I think, lot size, maybe?
I don't think so, I think it's all DES.
You said you're designed to conquer it.
And it's designed by a licensed professional.
Right, and you said it to conquer.
And it's also installed by a licensed installer.
Right.
And inspected by DES before it's buried.
Actually, they can be installed by private citizens now.
It used to be, I think they changed that rule.
I thought they just changed it back recently.
They did.
Really?
I think that you can install your own system, it still has to be inspected and everything.
Right.
But it, you can install.
Used to, used to let that, I mean, guys out there with pickaxes trying to put in a new septic system, and that's just not.
They changed it back.
Yeah.
Is my understanding.
And I think it, yeah, it's hard to wordsmith here in a meeting like this, but it should say something to the effect, uh. The property must upgrade the existing septic system to match the number, or to match the capacity.
Number of bedrooms. Capacity must be compliant with the number of units. Number of units, but, um, bedrooms.
How about if I volunteer to wordsmith this article?
Okay, I'll send you the word version.
Yeah. Next. And you might as well start figuring out how you're gonna structure the warrant article too. Cause you've really got two sections here, one, your definitions, there is a definition in the definition, definition section of the ordinance.
Yeah.
And so you're changing the definition to the following wording.
Well, be add to following definition to, to the zoning regs.
Change the existing definition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay.
Here's the new one.
Add or change whatever.
Uh, that off of, yeah.
And I'm done with this.
Yeah.
I can't think anymore.
No, next one.
What was the next one?
Parking.
Parking. We liked it, let it run. Cause we didn't change it.
We, we liked it.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, yeah, that's it, that's it, yeah.
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 Running with it.
Can read that?
No.
Okay.
I'm close enough now, I can read it.
I'm not that blind then.
But I wrote it, I knew it.
See, I didn't even know what it says, I came with my glasses, yeah.
It's called cameras. Think about it.
I'm getting new glasses soon, so, new lenses anyways.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we like it.
Our five's even shorter.
Very short.
It's where we remove the fourplex, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rob, how about if you send all of these to everybody so we can all look them over before the next meeting? And at the next meeting, we can aim for putting our stamp of approval on it. And then, um, you can send it off to the legal department and see what they do. For any new business? Public comment, Dr. McFay, Karen.
I have a question, and this is down the road. There was some conversation about having charrettes or involving the public, having to do good comments about their, um. The zones that they live in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cause obviously you've talked to the lake folks about what they're interested in. So are the, is that still in the works to talk to people?
Those, those will happen once we have something to show them. And again, to, to reiterate the process, we're starting out with a working group of one or two members.
Yeah, I get.
They will draft something, will expand it to maybe three or four people, will get feedback. It'll come before the planning board, we'll tweak it. And then after that, once we have something that we think might fly, then we will invite people from various districts or whatever to come in and give us their comments. So yes, it's in the works.
What they're trying to.
Probably won't happen until June.
But they're trying, trying to prevent, is what happened at our last, uh, master plans slash zoning charrette at the building.
Yeah.
We confused. Nobody had really seen yet.
Yeah.
Too much.
That was put out, and people, I'm pointing at somebody, did not like it.
Oh, I didn't like it, especially because somebody told me.
So we're trying to prevent that from happening, so when stuff's not ready for primetime, we're not putting it out.
Yes.
Yeah. And I'm not, I am sitting here and listening and appreciating the painstaking conversations and thought process that you all have in this. And, um, I have no axe to grind about this. I was just wanting to know whether that was still.
Yeah.
You're thinking about part of the process.
No, we're not thinking about it, we're going to do it, it is part of the process.
But.
And we're, you know, but we have to reach, we have to complete the preliminary steps.
All right, we spent an hour and a half talking about a couple of words on, in a paragraph.
Yeah.
And that's just us.
Yeah.
You get a room full of people, and they'll start looking at it, and it's like.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, yeah, we, we gotta be at least clear, and this is what we think it should be.
Yeah, I honor that wholeheartedly, it has to be as succinct and direct.
Yeah.
And as possible.
Yep.
Oh. Joe, two really quick things, we don't have to answer tonight. Um, there is a section in the zoning ordinance about the conservation commission, and David and I have exchanged some thoughts on that. And I think the idea was that we're not sure why that section's even in there, and we don't even need that for the new ordinance. Take a look at it when you get.
Which, which section?
The, the, there was a section about the conservation commission. And when they proposed an ordinance or an amendment two years ago, or maybe three years ago. Legal told us that it doesn't even belong in the zoning ordinance.
Establishes the conservation commission, and says you can have a chairman and so forth.
Yeah, that does not belong in our zoning ordinance, and I thought we had deleted it.
We probably didn't.
It's similar. Similar, um, the floodplain development ordinance, um, I'm thinking in twenty six, that we ought to separate that out as a completely separate. Worth it.
I think.
It is.
Well, I, I think.
Even means it has, it has to be in the zoning, it has to be in the zoning.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Well, I'm questioning whether that, you got it as a zoning ordinance, a separate document than what we currently have. It, it's, it's, it's listed as a, a chapter and verse in the same format as everything else.
Oh, just, I just.
It just means it's different document.
Yeah, floodplain ordinance, C documents somewhere else.
You know, it's just like a driveway ordinance.
I think I said, yeah, just, is, is, is adopted and the work, and the wording is over here or somewhere else on the town website?
No, it wouldn't even mention it in the.
I think it has to be mentioned in the zoning. Yeah, I believe, I think. Yeah, it is a, it is a zoning reg. It's a land use, it's a land use regulation.
Right.
It's, it's.
This one?
It's, it's on, starts on page ninety one of our zoning regs.
Eighty seven, bottom of page eighty seven.
I'm just looking at the table of contents.
What is it? What do you? Oh, yeah, I'm ready, as soon as they're done talking about the floodplain stuff, I don't remember where I do.
I'm talking about floodplain.
Oh, I thought we were talking about the conservation commission one. No.
No.
We're done with that.
I thought we got rid of that.
I have one that I'd like to bring to your attention, that's.
Oh, page sixty, Rob, conservation commission is page sixty.
Almost there.
Page sixty, here you go.
It's still there, that should be deleted. Six hundred and six oh one should be deleted. Maybe we should add that to our list of amendments?
Well, it, it's not, it's not causing any harm.
Yeah.
I think I just included when we rewrite the main.
Okay.
Yeah. The one that I have for you guys, let me just get back to it. This is coming up, and this has come up a couple of times, seven or eight, yeah. Couple of months. Well, I thought it was. And it is right here, the definition of a structure.
Yeah.
Any temporary or permanently constructed, erected, or placed material or combination of materials in or upon the ground, including but not limited to. And this is, this, this, this definition is one of the most important things in our ordinance, I'll just tell you to be perfectly honest. Because it has, it, it gives you things that are considered structures as examples.
Yeah.
But it also has these, this last sentence here, fences, culverts, driveways, roads, mailboxes, boughhouses not exceeding sixty-four square feet. Stone walls, walks, landscaping, subsurface waste, disposal facilities, and essential services are structures, but are exempt from dimensional and buffers zone requirements.
Right.
But here's what's, this is where the rubber meets the.
You brought that one up right here.
Yeah.
Did we talk about this already?
No, you, you and I talked about it, so if you take a deck, and you attach it to your house, and it's not attached to the ground, it's not a structure.
Yeah, so you got a house here like this, right?
So you can put it all the way to the water's edge.
So if somebody builds a deck on their house, and it's cantilevered.
That's not considered a structure.
So we've had a few people try to use that.
Part of the house.
So if the lake.
The wire is.
Cause in fifty feet, the fifty foot setback.
And the fifty foot setback is here, is that structure subject to setback? It's not a structure, because it's not in or upon the ground, it's over the ground. So you may wanna consider that, it maybe doesn't have to happen right away, but I've had a couple of people.
The state, the state.
All the.
The state will get you, because the overhang of the roof falls into.
I was gonna say, drip line.
Drip line is what they use in terms of, so you can't.
So again, if you're taking the drip line, is that.
Yeah, drip line right to there.
No, the drip line is the deck.
Whenever the furthest point of the.
And as I said, the DES does have an exemption for decks, they will let you go into the setback for a deck.
Really?
Such that won't. It's already.
So why did the, uh, the house on Crystal Lake get denied?
Um, because they actually put ears down into the ground, right there. They didn't cantilever. I had this come up one, once, one other time, a guy on, uh, Lake Street or Bridge Street, somewhere. He, we had troubles with him, it was a, it was like a carport that they put here, right, it was on the ground. So we told him, you can't have it, it's in the setback too close to the road or whatever. He said, what if I get one of those retractable awnings right here, and it goes out?
Right.
Then I can suck it back in.
Yeah, but it says, combination of materials, it's part, becomes part of the house, which is part of a combination of materials. So it becomes part of the house structure.
But it's not in, on the ground.
But the house itself. But by logic, by that logic, the eaves and the roof would not be part of the house.
Right, anything overhang, the eaves are overhanging.
They're not supported.
But they're connected, but they're tied to the house, which is a structure.
Right. And that's what this, I had this problem with, with my house, and the, I had to shorten my eave for state.
Okay, uh, we're talking town here, but, um, I think, I still think that's a weakness of your ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, it should be more clear.
To me, no, it's just an extension of the house, which is a structure, Rob.
It's pretty clear to me, but.
You could make it more clear.
Interpretation. We could make, you know, we could make it more clear when we do the rewrite.
Yeah, cause I think it's in or upon the ground that messes you up.
Yeah.
Cause you're saying it's not, because it's not attached to the ground.
No, but it's.
I don't even care about.
But it's an extension of the existing structure.
Right, and I, and I'm not even caring about the water piece.
No.
I'm caring about.
It could be a sideline.
A sideline where it's fifteen foot.
Absolutely.
It can go right up to the line.
Right, yeah, no, it's.
Yeah, which is stupid. Right.
Let's not change this for a year.
It's the in or upon the ground.
Well, you just. To the property line, and will the fence be supported.
Oh, that's, that's even better. Because the fence is exempt, you could extend it to the fence.
On Chris.
And have, and have the fence be the, be the outboard support of the deck.
Yeah.
Well, well, but as soon as the, the deck is attached to the fence. Well, well, but as soon as the, the deck is attached to the fence, it becomes a structure.
Well, we just.
No, as soon as it's attached to the house, it's a structure.
Right, the fence is exempt. Well, or just.
Right, if you put a deck on, it's not a fence anymore, it's a deck.
No, it's a fence. It's a fence and you have two big or maybe three.
That would be, it, it's.
Three big, um, posts, the support.
Somebody will do it.
Of course. There's nobody across the lake that used a dock for their.
We, I think, I think we beat this one up too hard. I just thought I'd bring it to your attack. It's come up a bunch of times.
I have something that generally I'd like to.
Okay, let's, let's do it quickly cuz we're, we're past our two hours.
It's the portion. Yeah, so, um.
Cause.
You guys may or not agree with this, but, but I would think, Rob, as the planning and zoning administrator, if in the course of his year, he sees something in the ordinance like this that really does need addressing, that we should encourage Rob to draft wording that he'd rather see and work with.
In your spare time.
And bring it to us. You don't need to sleep. To, to consider.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, on this one, you just changed in or upon or attached to pre-existing structure.
Can I just ask a question about this?
Yeah.
I'll try and make this really brief. The other wording that's in there, when it talks about fences, culverts, blah, blah. Does that mean that, so people can put stuff outside of their house and they can, it's not, it's exempt from dimensional and buffer zone requirements? So somebody could have something really big right up against your boundary and that's okay?
Like what?
Uh.
Culvert.
A fence is good.
Stone wall.
Um.
Roads, driveways.
But.
It's maximized at sixty-four. Well, that's bough houses only.
Just the bough house.
Bough house.
Says perimeter or corner.
I don't know why you'd have a bough house there because.
Well, because you take it in and the bough house is the whole.
Okay, yeah, okay.
You store it there.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just thinking of, that this, to me, opens up the, and maybe it's been okay. But it opens up the idea that you could have a neighbor with a whole lot of stuff in their yard. That's right up against.
And, and Rob, that's not the issue you're running into.
No.
No, I. Buffer zone requirement.
Yeah. It's definitely specific to these items listed here. You can't have, you can't have anything other than these items.
Right.
What's a storage tank? You know, so somebody could have an oil tank?
Yeah, above ground oil tank.
Or your propane tank.
Your propane tank. Tank or a, like a power pedestal. Yeah, that would be a generator.
All right, well, it hasn't come up, but I was just, since we're like really looking carefully at wording, it just surprised me.
Okay.
Is it time?
It must be.
It will be time if somebody makes a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Linda made a motion.
Then we adjourn.
And I think Dan seconded. All in favor. I, I, folks, that's, there's, uh, eight forty-four.
Oh.
Productive meeting, folks. Thank you.